Okay, the time is after eight o'clock. I would ask you to please take your seats.
Johnny.
Anyone who is a resident and voting member of Tilton should be seated hopefully inside the railing. Anyone, when we get going a little later, anyone who is outside the railing, if we have any votes, your vote will not count unless you are inside the railing. The time is now eight o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And the first order of business today, I'm gonna introduce our police chief, Robert Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning, everybody. It looks like we're gonna have a beautiful Saturday. Hey, I just wanted to take up a quick minute before we get the meeting started, and I'd first like to thank the town and the board of selectmen this morning for, they chose to put our Tilton Police Explorers on the Town Report this year, and we really appreciate it. It means a lot to the explorers and to their families. And then secondly, every year the Tilton Police Explorers come together to help raise money for TNS Christmas Fund, the Vicki Virgin Food Drive, and many other charities throughout the year. They're standing out in all kinds of cold weather and rainy weather and giving up their weekends to help make us a better community. So, before we get started, could I just give them a round of applause and look behind you there? Thank you, guys. We're gonna do this every time.
And now I would ask you to please all stand and, with our sacred allegiance to the flag, behind you on the wall. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, the Lord, and justice for all. We have a few more announcements before we get into the actual meeting component. The first announcement that I wanna make, I have received a letter from John O'Brien, who is a Vietnam veteran, and he wants to make sure that everyone who is a veteran gets invited, and others also, to a Veterans Welcome Home Ceremony. They've been doing this annually, and each year we have made this announcement. But this year, this event is being held on April the 2nd, and it's gonna be held at two o'clock at the Hanover High School gymnasium, which is at 41 11th Street in Hanover. Couple of other little bookkeeping things. I would like very much to take this opportunity to thank also our supervisors of the checklist up there in the back for all their work, both especially in all the town elections, as you know, we're in a busy year already between the town elections and the presidential project. So, thank you very much, supervisors. I hope as you, Ciki, if you'll just check around you and make sure that those who are seated in the lower level are all residents of the town of Tilton. Again, those of service and non-residents should be seated behind the railing. Again, if I ask for a standing vote, only those who would be inside the railing will be counted. My name is Chuck Mitchell, I'm your town moderator. Thank you for electing me to my fourth term. I'm not sure if that's something I am overly pleased with at times. To my left, to your right, Cindy Reinhart, our town clerk and tax collector. To my immediate left is Helen Hanks, she was sworn in today as my assistant moderator, to keep track of the speaking order and any other duties which she needs to. Also Linda Burns, sitting right down here in front, she is also an assistant moderator, she would be helping do any counts. And then Scott Davis, whispering, Scott. Oh, and Scott also will be assisting in any kind of weather running that we'll have today. To my right, I'd like to introduce Pat Constantino, who will introduce all this electorate.
Morning, everyone. To my left is Selectman Catherine Dawson, our vice chairman. To my right is Selectman Joe Jessman, Selectman John Scanlon, Selectman Peter Fogg, our finance director, Tim Pearson, and somewhere up back is our town administrator, Joyce Fullwell, and our administrative assistant, Gail Vastnik, standing in front of her.
Okay, to my left, Wayne Brock, who's gonna introduce the budget committee.
I have a voice, introducing Karen, so I will voice the microphone. You're right. I have a mic.
Can't hear you. Hold the mic.
Christine Davidsky. Julia Lurie.
Okay, next I would like to introduce our town clerk, Cindy Reinhart, who's gonna give you the election results.
The 2016 town elections were held in the Brutus Farm Regional High School on Tuesday, March of 2016. Selectman Joseph Jessman moved the meeting to Forest, seconded by Linda Burns. Moderator Chuck Mitchell called the meeting to order at 8:00 AM. The moderator and assistant moderator inspected the ballot box, ensuring that they were presenting the voting machine zero. Moderator Mitchell then led the assembly to the Budget Allegiance. Topson two ballots were processed at 10:00 AM, as opposed to three in total. At 7:00 PM, the moderator called a motion. All for motion declared the polls closed. Selectman Joseph Jessman moved to both polls and recessed the town meeting until 8:00 AM March 12, in the high school cafeteria, seconded by Kathleen, until the polls were declared closed at 7:00 PM. Two hundred and seven ballots were passed. There was no surprises on the ballot. Everybody that ran won, because it was welcome as a basis. There was one opening for the budget committee that was not, nobody ran for it. Matthew Corwell had write-in votes, only six, but he won, and he accepted deposition, while some of the articles did pass and neither appeared. Thank you.
On your way in, I hope each of you had a chance to pick up a copy of the moderator's rules for the meeting. I wanna quickly discuss two or three of them, and after that discussion, I'd like to accept a motion in order to approve these rules for this meeting. A couple of the common ones that people oftentimes want to use or could misuse, one of them is closing debate. And in the estimation of the moderator, if sufficient discussion on it has not occurred, I will not honor a move to close debate. Especially if there are people standing in line at the microphone. That motion to close debate or calling to question is not debatable and requires a two-thirds vote. Another one is to table a motion. Sometimes people think if you table a motion, you can actually kill it. That is not correct. The use of the word "to table a motion" means that what you want to do is defer it to later in the meeting, and you would rather deal with another article first. If you, however, wish to actually kill a motion, the thing to do would be to move to postpone it indefinitely. Two other rules. One of them has to do with protecting your vote, which is something that this assembly has done for years, and what someone should do on that one would actually be to move to restrict reconsideration, which means if that motion were to pass, then no one would be able to move to reconsider later in the meeting. A motion to reconsider is something which is also allowable and can be brought up any time during the meeting, and if the majority wished, it can reconsider a vote if it has not already been restricted. I will make every effort to allow everyone the opportunity to speak if they want to. I'm requesting that the uncles speak and try to stick to the question, and if it involves personnel, we talk about the positions and not the person. We are asking those, those who make the motions, we give them up to five minutes to speak. Those who want to speak for or against a motion will have, try to keep it to two minutes. My assistant moderator Helen is going to keep track of the time. When the time is appropriate, she'll wave this, tell them you've got fifteen seconds left, and then she's got a little kitchen timer that'll go off with the buzzer, and we would ask you to try to stick to the two-minute mark. If you need additional time, I certainly would be willing to grant that. Are there any questions? There's one little applause that I wanna read to you. Title III, Town, Cities, Villages, Chapter Forty, Government and Town Meeting Proceeding, Section Forty, Colon, Ten, Debate. No person shall speak in any meeting without leave of the moderator, nor when any other person is speaking in order, and all persons shall be silent at the desire of the moderator and on pain of a forfeiting of one dollar for each offense for the use by the town. So, we have been on clean people today. I will point you out if you'll have to bring your dollar back. Okay, I'm well willing to accept a motion now to approve the moderator's rules. Pack, move by Pat Constantino, is there a second? Seconded by Linda Burns. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. We would ask anyone who wants to speak to a motion or to make a motion to make sure that they go to a microphone. Legally, we have to have people's names, and we also, when you get to the microphone, you state your name and your address. This is being recorded, and Cindy needs to make sure to keep record of all of the speakers' names, so that's why we asked you to go to the microphone. When we start to get to the articles, I will refrain from reading the entire part from beginning to end and treat these as one article at a time, if that's with your permission for us. So, we wanna start by going to article number three. Article number three. I'm gonna pause for just one moment. Pat would like to make an announcement, and I will let her do that right now.
Thank you, Chuck. The Selectmen wanted to give you an update on the Caleb Hill project improvement that's going on. This two million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project was approved at the March 2014 town meeting to reconstruct the project, the two miles of Caleb Hill Road from the intersection of Flat Road to San Martin Town Line. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation signed a municipal management agreement with the town on August of 2015 to reimburse the town eighty percent of the total project costs. The town pays twenty percent and takes ownership and maintenance of the road at the completion of the project. This project has spanned three years, beginning in 2016, with the Selectmen going through the process of hiring a qualified engineer firm to prepare the road design, obtain necessary permits, prepare the construction bid documents, oversee the bid process, and provide construction administration and inspection services once construction begins. In the meantime, New Hampshire DOT District Three personnel already completed some drainage improvements during 2015. They will also be paid a bit, spot drag and shim portions of that Caleb Hill Road during the summer of 2016, which will tide us over until our project begins construction. This material will be reused when the road is reconstructed. We will keep the town in property owners informed of the process. Please check the town's website and continue updates on our tiltonnh.org under Content State Roads, or you can contact Johnny Van Castle, our Tilton Public Works Director, at 2864721. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to article number three. To see if the town will vote to rescind the provisions of RSA 31:95-H, established at the March 2013 Town Meeting, Article 10, for the purpose of setting up the Town of Tilton Recycling Revolving Fund, and further to rescind the requirement for residents to purchase designated Town of Tilton trash bags to dispose of their garbage. Any remaining amounts of this fund will become part of the general fund accumulated surplus. This was actually submitted by petition, and I'm gonna call on Joe Jessman.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move article number three to the floor.
Do we have a second? We have a second, and it's gonna be seconded by Scott Davis.
At this time, I'd like to see the balance of my time, so let's just start this.
Okay, Mr. Davis, would you please go to microphone number two? Microphone number two?
Microphone?
Microphone two, please.
Can you hear me now? Yeah. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to say, I'm, oh. Can you hear me now? I'd like to make a motion to amend this article as such. To see if the town will vote to rescind the provision of RSA 31:95-H, established at the March 2013 Town Meeting, Article 10, for the purpose of setting up the Town of Tilton Recycling Revolving Fund, and further to rescind the requirements for residents to purchase designated Town of Tilton trash bags to dispose of their garbage. The curbside recycling pickup will continue as it has been, but the cost for the curbside recycling pickup will not be paid for by property taxation instead of purchasing Town of Tilton trash bags. The period which the purchasing of the Town of Tilton trash bags will be discontinued will sometime after the contract with Waze Zero has ended. To also raise an appropriate sum of fifteen thousand dollars to be added to the line 01-82-4323.99-860. Sanitation recycling. This money will be used to close out the Town of Tilton Trash Bag Program. Any remaining amounts in the fund will become part of the general fund accumulated surplus. That's how I'd like to amend this article.
Okay, so now Scott Davis is making this as an amendment. Do we have a second to this amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Joe Jessman. Okay, Scott, you wanna talk? Give us your rationale, please.
Yeah, the reason being for the amendment is that when we first went on the matter of signatures, we did not have, there was a lot of questions. People don't wanna be going to the curbside. This is just to get ready, there's two parts to it. There's the purchasing of the bags, which we buy, and then there's the curbside recycling, which the purchasing of the bags pays for the curbside recycling. So, this article is only to address the fact that we, within three years, we've been over fifty percent, we've done great success within the recycling program. Now it's time to take the training bills off. The bags we use as a means of training the people to recycle. We've been way over fifty percent. So, if we put it on property taxation as opposed to paying for the bags, the Selectmen are adhering into a new contract with the poller, so the price is going up, so the bag prices are gonna have to increase. This is a more economical way for us as citizens to pay for this. It brings the commercial sector into paying for it. We are a community, and there's no reason the commercial sector shouldn't be paying for this. We pay for everyone else, and they rely on us. So, I just feel that if you look at the cost, if the bags are gonna go up to a dollar and a half and two dollars, you're looking at a large bag, a hundred and four dollars a year. If we pay for the property taxation on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, it's comparable about thirty-eight dollars, about nineteen dollars for a hundred thousand, and then, so thirty-eight dollars for two hundred, nineteen cents for a thousand. So, this is just a better way for us to pay for it. It saves us money along the way. And then, again, you're not seeing where you can down to buy a bag, and then the bags have gone up. And not only that, the fifteen thousand is a way, you better remember the retailers such as Brian Horns, Hannah Furbs, Walgreens, all the people, spoken by earlier, all the people that have been selling the bags, they may not run a cent off selling the bags. So, the fifteen thousand is a way of buying back the stock that's in these retailers from this program. See, from the Selectmen book, shut it down. They have the money to buy it back, and it's not good, and most retailers will be stuck with that in the world.
Thank you, Natalie. On the floor right now is an amended article, and so at this point, do we have any discussion? See, no discussion? I'm gonna go ahead and call a question. I'm gonna reread the article, number three. To see if the town will vote to rescind the provisions of RSA 31:95-H, established at the March 2013 Town Meeting, Article 10, for the purpose of setting up the Town of Tilton Recycling Revolving Fund, and further rescind the requirement for residents to purchase designated Town of Tilton trash bags to dispose of their garbage. The curbside recycling pickup will continue as it has been, and now the cost for the curbside recycling pickup will not be paid for by the property taxation instead of purchasing the Town of Tilton trash bags. The period for purchasing of the Town of Tilton bags will be discontinued, and will be sometime after the contract with Waze Zero has ended. To also raise an appropriate sum of fifteen thousand dollars to be added to the line Sanitation recycling to be used to close out the Town of Tilton Trash Bag Program. Any remaining amounts of this fund will become part of the general fund accumulated surplus. Okay, all those in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, and I so declare. Now, since that is amended, this is now the main motion. Is there any discussion on the main motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Can I make one more point? I set up the recycling committee, and there's other members that support this, I set up a recycling committee, and I will just tell the body that you, I would personally along with the committee would pay close attention to what the tonnage, we reduce their tonnage going in for waste over fifty percent. You would pay close attention to the numbers. If we don't write the training course, I will be back with you saying that we need to sign the program up again. You know, if the people come and wonders, I don't see that that's gonna happen, but just so that they are rest assured that it was a vehicle to get people to recycle, there's no reason we can't continue up the same, we're often close to the same percentage that we have now. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like me to read the entire article again? Okay, in the absence of that, article three is now the main article. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me? Wait, order? Mr. Jessman?
As far as the date that we terminate this, we have a contract with Waze Zero through the end, through the beginning of June, and we're gonna have to wind this down, we'll have to buy bags, certain amount of bags. We'll have to make, coming up when we do the budget, we'll have to make budget amendments to account for where the money's coming from. I support this, I was on the regional committee that brought in the purple bags. And again, I told Marge I would say this, I talked with Marge Mon, who's the heart and soul of our recycling committee, and she's totally against it. But that's it, I'm totally for it. There you have it, and I think that's it.
Any other comments or ideas? Please go to the microphone. Microphone number two? Can you turn the volume on microphone two up just a little bit, please?
Listen, I hope, if you can, I test the road, and I'm against changing this. I think that I've seen, just in my area, a great improvement in our trash is being taken up. Well, longer are residents of, I know, some residents in San Martin who have dropped off, in the past dropped off garbage to be picked up by Tilton, because San Martin doesn't have garbage to pick up. Once we started with the purple bags, this has no longer happened, or in different houses at least, in San Martin, people have to go buy the purple bags. The other objection I have is one that I've felt all along for the forty-four-year section here. Everything we do is based on property taxes, and property taxes don't always reflect how much sewage there is, what we use, or how much trash we put out. I like it exactly the way it's been, and it's wonderful. Thank you.
Anyone else interested in speaking on this? Please go to the microphone. Microphone one?
Around sixty-six East, three hundred and sixty-two. The biggest problem I have with the purple bags is that they rip horribly. You can't contain your garbage without trying one, unless it weighs less than twenty pounds. The quality of them is terrible for the price we have to pay for them. If we not keep the same program and go to a sticker so that we can use our old bags, so that the program continues the way it is, because I think the program is not valid, the bags are horrible. And I think that's a big piece of the problem.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Natalie Lawrence. My other question is, we are going to give the money back to the commercial companies, the stores, what about people who have surplus bags?
That would be addressed during the wind-down period. We'd ascertain exactly how many bags are in the general population right now, and we have a target date, at a certain point. The only way, I do not speak for the board of selectmen, we have not discussed it, but the only way I see it working, somewhat on the line, we have to buy back bags unless we get really lucky. We have to buy bags from Waze Zero, they're nineteen or twenty cents a piece, but if I have to buy bags from Linda, they're two bucks a piece. So, there's a cost to winding down the program. The fifteen thousand dollars that Mr. Davis alluded to helps with that very process. I mean, it's not gonna, it's not like if we vote yesterday, it doesn't end tomorrow, but it would wind down over the next thirty, sixty, forty, thirty, forty-five, sixty days, depending on how many bags are out there. Again, the Selectmen would have to discuss it, and we can develop a feasible plan for it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Jane Alden, Tilton. I understand that the contract we negotiated, is that the rest? Is there a waste?
Yes, you will. Yes, you will.
Mr. Davis alluded to the fact that the cost of the bags will go up, I think $4 for the used, there's a quote. How do we know that if we have a negotiating contract?
Okay, the question was if the bags are going to increase across up to $4 a bag, how do you project that cost right now? Mr. Davis?
Point of clarification, I never said four. I said for if you use the bag a week on the large bags and went to $2, it would be $104, Jen.
Oh, yeah. But you were saying that we're bought to $2?
Talking with the financial director in the town. That's what he's estimating that with the new contract.
How would we know that with the contract?
I'm sorry, please, not a debate back and forth between two people. If you would like to ask a question... If you would like me to ask a question of the finance director, we could do that.
I'll see, that's what I'm coming.
Okay, Mr. Pearson, can you answer the question about how you get your information, please?
Hi, I'm Tim Pearson, finance and accounting director. So I know a lot about this program. And just to clarify something, the curbside recycling, it's not going to end, it's going to continue. The article just seeks to change how it's paid for. Now, it's paid for by the bag sales. And if it passes, you'll be able to purchase your own bags and put them out next to recycling containers. And if you use contractor bags, they'll be picked up. If you use white kitchen bags, they'll be picked up. Whatever you choose to use and put out will still be picked up. So this is really a matter of how we pay for it. So the issue of the contract, we have pricing currently. We just haven't executed a contract with the Hala. But we know what the proposed pricing is. And we're trying to find ways of finding more advantageous contract with the town. So this is based on what we've been given in proposal. We know that currently, we're not raising enough money through the bag sales, because as we've gotten better and better in recycling, there's less and less bags being purchased because there's less trash. So as we've gotten better at recycling, we're not raising enough money. So the only other way to pay for this program is to raise the bag prices. So, okay, did that answer your question? If you look in the town report at the end of the year, we actually had negative $10,000, $10,000 in this fund that pays for recycling. Some of this is just a timing issue. We received some of this this year that helped with that. But right now, we're not collecting enough money through bag sales. And the minimum we would have to go up to, although it might be up to the selectmen to decide, the minimum that I can tell is we got $1.50 for the small bags and $2 for the large bags. And that might not even be enough. It would have to be $1.75 and $2.25 for that. So it's, again, the warrant article doesn't seek to change the curbside collection of recycling. It's just how we pay for it. So right now, it's totally burdened on residents who purchase the bags. Whereas this article would spread it out over the entire tax base. So we pay for things as citizens that are... That we wouldn't ordinarily need, because we've got exit 20, we have the Russian police department, then we go for a town ourselves of residents. You know, it's that type of thing. We're supporting the commercial community, and this way, the commercial community will help pay for some of this recycling that you want.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, please go to the microphone.
I need some good detail on your draft. Everyone's concerned about how they're going to get the money out for their trash bags or buying them back. Why can't we do it individually? Like, we know, I know I use a bag a week. So why can't we just go buy one back? Only a time of day. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, another question, yes?
Just a question for whoever's doing these numbers. What happens when we suddenly stop recycling as much? Because it's not really already a financial equation. Say we recycle half as much after going for... Otherwise, I like the idea. But what would the numbers look like after you kept recycling months at about a half or a third?
I believe Mr. Davis did say that they would be monitoring the amount of recycling materials. And if in fact it increased substantially, they might have to go back to the bags. He did say that. If you'd like to hear it or repeat that, that's fine.
I did hear him say that.
Yep.
But I was wondering if there was actual numbers and what would be the plan if it was decreased?
I think you're asking a hypothetical, which I don't know that you can easily... I'll let Mr. Davis respond.
All I can say is that we produce better than 50% of the trash that we haul out of town. And all the recycling committee can do is look at those numbers. And if we see a drastic change in those numbers, then we'll come back to this body with a solution. Probably go back to the bags. I would hope that after two and a half, three years, this has been going on since 2013, I would hope that people, the residents in the town, have been trained well enough. It's been very easy. People like the curbside. When we went around and got signatures to put this on the board, the one thing people said, they had the same concerns as this point. The bag quality was terrible, the shrinks broke, there was quality problems all the time. And that's the one problem we've had with the recycling committee is the bag wall. We would hope that people have been trained. They are used to it, it's a habit, there's now recycling. We don't feel there's going to be a big change. There might be a little change, and we would pay attention to that. And we will come back each year to this body, whether we have a warrant or an article to ask to go back, or we will at least come back with something to let the townspeople know how well we've done in the year of this class. Okay?
Microphone two.
Nancy Johnson, can I have a quick question?
Yes, go right ahead. You want to call the question, okay? All those in favor of calling a question, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Okay, Article Number Three. "See if the town will vote to rescind the provisions of RSA 3195-8 established at the March 2013 town meeting. Article Number 10, for the purpose of setting up the Town and Tilton Recycling Revolving Fund and further rescind the requirement for residents to purchase designated Town and Tilton trash bags to dispose of their garbage. The curbside recycling pickup will continue as it has been, but now the cost for the curbside recycling pickup will not be paid for the property taxation instead of the purchasing of the Town and Tilton trash bags. The period which the purchasing of Tilton trash bags will be discontinued and will sometime after the contract with Waste Zero has ended. To also raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be added to line item 01-82-8323.99-860. Zero of the sanitation recycling to be used to close out the Town and Tilton Trash袋 Program. Any remaining allowance of this fund will become part of the Town and Fund accumulated surplus." So if you... This is now the main motion. If you vote yes, then you have the vote to pass this and to get rid of the purple trash bags. Are there any questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Article Three passes, and I so declare. Mr. Davis, please make sure to work with the town clerk in the pocket of that article that's inside. Article Number Four. Before I read this, the... Many of you have probably already picked up the one printed Article Four, which is the housing ordinance. The Board of Selectmen will be making an amendment. So after the original article has been moved, I would call on Catherine Dawson to make an amendment. Article Four, "See if the town will vote to adopt the Tilton Housing Standards Ordinance." Catherine Dawson is moving Article Four for discussion.
I'd like to make first two, Article Four to the floor for discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Pat Constantino.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make amendment to the warned article Number Four. "To see if the town will vote to create the Tilton Housing Standard Board, the first members of the board shall be appointed by the town moderator before April 15, 2016. The board will consist of two members of the Board of Health, which are the selectmen, as per RSA New Hampshire RSA 128-3, the fire chief or his designated, a land use individual, a landlord, which must be a resident of the Town and Tilton, and two members at large, one preferably a tenant. The board shall review and amend if necessary the proposed Tilton Housing Standard Ordinance, hold a minimum of two properly noticed public hearings, and will have a warned article ready by the February 1, 2017 deadline for town meeting."
Okay, so it has been moved by Pat Constantino. Is there a second? Seceded by Catherine Dawson. Okay, so this is now the amended Article Four. This is now open for discussion. It's either Catherine or Pat, who should speak to that.
Well, I think the amendment speaks for itself. But the reason for the housing standards is my years as health officer and going into different rental situations, it's obvious that we need standards so landlords will know what type of dwelling units they have to maintain for their tenants. It's really just that simple. I don't know what else to say about it. Except to tell you some horror stories, but it's for the safety of the tenants.
Your side, Pat? Okay, we have microphone two.
Yeah, Pat, part from Tilton. I got a lot of phone calls about the original warrant. And I called Pat Constantino to, as the chairman of the board, to discuss it. And she had informed me last night that there would be an amendment that is before us today to kind of take another look at it, because they felt that it was really important through discussions at the Board of Selectmen to put the brakes on this for right now until the committee has had a chance to review it and come up with maybe a revised warrant for next year. Now, I would... I know that there is a rule in effect, Mr. Moderator, to only have one amendment on the floor at a time. And that's exactly what I wanted to do, is make an amendment to an amendment. So what part of this that I would like to have changed and would like to have the selectmen reconsider is to allow the landlord not necessarily have to be a citizen of the Town and Tilton. There are already a taxpayer in the Town and Tilton. But what I would like to do is to change that to read that the landlord to be within a 10-mile radius, a resident within a 10-mile radius of the Town and Tilton. There are some landlords that live fairly close to town that are well aware of this. And there are people that have called me that are landlords that do not reside in the town but might be willing to be on this committee. So if that's proper, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to see if the selectmen would be willing to modify their amendment to read that.
Because this is an amendment, I would rather go ahead and deal with this amendment right now. And then when it becomes the main motion, you can, you could propose an amendment to then when this becomes the main article to change that. And then you can have your discussion on that at that time.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Okay, the chair recognizes Pat Dawson. Excuse me, the moderator.
I'd just like to speak to what Pat is talking about. One of the reasons why we asked, we created the amendment and specified a resident in Town and Tilton is because there... A lot of people don't realize how many out-of-state landlords we have. And it's astronomical compared to the landlords that we do have. And that's why we didn't want some of the city-run committee that was from Rhode Island or Florida, somebody like that, you know, within a 10-mile radius in our next community that's committed to our community within our towns. I have no problem with that at all. But out-of-staters are doing this because they're not really committed to our town and what's involved in our town.
I think right now, however, the discussion on... I'd like to keep it focused right now on this particular amendment. So if there is anything else that... Yes?
Scott Davidson. We have the screen so we can read the whole amendment. I've only seen part of it, and I don't know what the whole... I know you've read it, Mr. Moderator, and I apologize for that. We can't see what the actual, the full, all the wording on the document, I don't know, can I make a size? We can't.
Our volunteer, the... While we're in the process of doing that, go right ahead. Microphone two.
Mary Ann Abbott from 28 Main Street. And I would like to say that I think it's a really good idea to postpone this until next year after we've had a chance to form a committee. And look at this, I think the long-term impact that this could have on Tilton is huge. Could affect our taxes, it could affect property values, it can affect rental costs, and I just am alarmed and happy to be. I'm grateful that Pat put that in.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to go to a microphone and speak? Microphone two.
Joe Bussner, 33 Clark Road, Tilton. The issue that I want to bring to light here is this is the first time in 25 years I've been involved with town government that something has come before us without any petition, without any approval of the selectmen, and yet never had any public hearings. What I'd like to do is some kind of explanation of how this actually come in the warrant, and that made to the people. Thank you.
Okay, I think perhaps Catherine Dawson would like to respond to this.
Well, if you remember, it was on the warrant last year. And we heard, what was that? The late summer, early fall, sent it to one of the attorneys the town uses. There were multiple emails to this attorney asking him for a final result, you know? He had suggested to us that the selectmen could actually write the ordinance without coming through legislative body. Um, he was told by the board of selectmen that under forty-eight A, New Hampshire RSA forty-eight A, it really was intended to go to the legislative body to decide, and it really wasn't a selectmen's ordinance. We finally heard from this attorney January twenty-ninth. Um, we're under the wire. I mean, that's late, but there wasn't much that could be done. Hence the reason it is patterned after Pittsville. Altered a bit to Tilton, but you can see that there's work to be done, and the selectmen always intended that that was not the final product. But because of this attorney's delay, hence, I don't want to say hastily, but there was work to be done. The reason there were not any public hearings is it was not a selectmen's ordinance. It wasn't just something the selectmen were passing. This is the hearing for that, that document. We made it available. It was available last year. Um, the amendment was created by the board of selectmen Thursday night because we heard what the public was saying to us and felt that, all right, create the committee first, and let them take this draft, if you will, and create a document that would work for the town of Tilton.
Microphone two.
Sandy Posner, Clark Road, Tilton. Uh, I also remember last year at the meeting that the selectmen brought a floor that they were going to table this because they wanted to have an attorney look at it and finalize everything that there was, to get it all straightened out, bring back the voters. And at that time, the legislative body was told that once they had done this, they would have a public hearing to tell this legislative body exactly what changes, what the final product was going to be. So you can imagine my shock when I went in to see, uh, Eric Ho and whatnot. There's the ordinance laying there, but then we had been no public hearing. Now, I realize that if you, uh, if the selectmen is not doing it, that public hearing is not required, but you can't just come to the legislative body with a thirty-two very onerous regulation and expect that people would vote for something that they haven't had an opportunity to even go over to see what changes, if any, were in. So I think this will leave me very pleased and proud, all of you, for delaying it again because I think you'll have a lot better. We can have a committee look at this and come up with what would be the best interest of our town. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Microphone two.
James Croppson, San Juan Road, Tilton. Uh, I like the amendment, except for the fact that the wording is such that it predisposes that there will be a warrant when in fact I believe the board should have the right and opportunity to determine whether or not a warrant article is warranted.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes?
Stanley Brown, Cable Hill. What we're talking about here is the amendment of the number of people on this committee, and my biggest concern is a small number of people are going to have a say as to what's happening with rental properties in the town, one of them being the landlord. So the possibility of corruption goes up greatly with that much power, such a small amount of people making this discussion. Some of our landlords and property owners don't even live in the state, so a meeting that happens between a handful of people could make it so that they decide on standards for people who don't even live here or came in to the meeting or aren't available. One of the concerns is it's stationary after it's built. One of the concerns of the people that I know live in this, you know, this attacks every day. It's onerous because of the number of rental units and that burden to the actual property owner. My concern is a small amount of people with a whole lot of power making decisions on a thirty-page, possible fine threat ordinance.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seen, and I'm going to go ahead and reread the article, and we can vote on it. Once we vote on it, if it passes, it becomes the main motion. At that point, that could then be amended if there is a question about the composition of the, of the group that will be overseeing this. Okay, Article number four, the amendment to see if the town will vote to create a Tilton Housing Standard Board. The first members of the board shall be appointed by the town moderator before April fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. The board will consist of two members of the Board of Health or selectmen, as per N-H, New Hampshire RSA one twenty-eight, colon, three. The fire chief or his designated, a land use individual, a landlord, must be a resident of the town of Tilton, and two members at large, one preferably a tenant. The board shall review and amend, and if necessary, the proposed Tilton Housing Standard Ordinance, hold a minimum of two properly noticed public hearings, and will have a warrant article ready by February first, two thousand seventeen deadline, is the deadline for town meeting for next year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
I declare that the motion passes, so this is now the main motion of the main Article Four. Now, if there are any, to be any additional amendments, I think now would be the time.
Mr. Moderator, Pat Park from Tilton. I'd like to amend the motion on the floor to see if the town will amend the motion to have the land, to have the landlord be a resident within a ten mile radius from the town of Tilton.
Uh, do you have a second?
I'll have a second.
What was that?
Steve O'Leary.
Steve O'Leary and...
One he can.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded that the landlord be someone who lives within a ten mile radius of the town of Tilton. My question to you is briefly is ten miles from any, not the center of town, but ten miles from any, any town line.
Right.
So theoretically, someone in Sanlton might be twelve miles away, still live in Sanlton, but not qualified?
Ten miles is what I have, yeah.
Okay, just, just, just to be clear.
I also want to go on record as, uh, appreciate what's taken done to put the brakes on this, taking other articles to be for a man.
Any questions or comments? Come right to the microphone, please. Microphone one.
And, um, Main Street, Tilton. Uh, I think you have to take into consideration that the landlords that don't live here in any town body, not ten miles. Because if they live twelve miles to Sanlton, they're not going to make it. They're not going to make the policy. So any town body is a town of Tilton, from the town line to town line.
Uh, Mr. Davis, microphone two.
Yes, Ms. Parker. The, I agree with that in a way, but what I'm more concerned about is that the residents of the town of Tilton on this board are only made up of two people. We have two people from the board of selectmen. Um, maybe the selectmen would consider going to one board of the selectmen, member of the board of selectmen, and then three members of the, of the residents, just because we're the ones that live next door in these rental apartments, and we see what's going on. A lot of us, uh, see what's going on in these, in these rental apartments. Um, that's just, uh, just my, my phone appeal on that.
I'm going to call first. Catherine, I've got just one.
The reason the selectmen, part of the makeup of this board comes directly from the RSA, which is forty-eight A, um, colon, three. And it describes a board that would be created, um, if you had a housing standard ordinance, so the thought was, fashion this board after, so as many members that create it could also be on that housing standard board. And it requires, um, two of whom shall be the head of the municipal health department and head of the municipal fire department. Hence the reason for the two selecting, because in a town as one twenty-eight, colon, three states, your Board of Health is your board of selectmen. So that's why those three members were put in there. And I'm looking to see what else. It's kind of lengthy, but that's why those three in particular were added into this.
Can I add one of clarifications, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Um, Catherine, you, you were mentioning that, uh, either the board or the fire chief, is that what you're, fire department? Is that what you're saying? Two members, so we could have one from the board of selectmen, one from the fire department?
No. A board consisting of at least five members, two of whom shall be the head of the municipal health department. Oh, and the head of the municipal fire department.
So we could have one shift and one fire, one fire.
It could be one and one. Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add to, please, excuse me, Dan Miles, Tilton, Main Street. I understand, um, I, I understand not, again, the ten mile thing, but like she said, um, a lot of these landlords don't live in town. Uh, a lot of these landlords live out of state, but you don't want their taxpayers in your town. They're the ones that are paying the taxes for the buildings that they rent out. They should have a say. They should have an opinion. I think the landlords should get together and maybe committee themselves, and then have one of them represent themselves at this meeting.
Microphone number two.
Got to boost up a little bit. Jim Osher, two sixty-six, Main Street, Tilton. I don't understand the necessity for this legislation personally. Most of this is already covered by state law. And if there's an issue, you can go to the town representative, the person in charge of sanitation or whatever. So personally, I just don't see this as being necessary, and as somebody said earlier, the cost of this is going to be, actually, it's going to be passed on to the ultimate consumer, which is the tenant. And I don't think there's too many tenants that live in Zeta Go up. And of course, if a landlord's worthy of the name, he's going to do, or she's going to do what is necessary to keep a good tenant. So, that's all I have to say.
Catherine.
Um, just a brief comment on that. The state actually, RSA doesn't cover probably ninety percent of what is in this type of housing standard ordinance. Forty-eight A, colon, fourteen is the minimum housing standard, and it's pretty basic. It's hot water, it's heat, it's electric road, and bugs, and roads, those kind of things. One of the things it doesn't do, it doesn't allow a health officer to look at every single, um, tenant rental in the community to make sure that, um, you know, basic things, I'll tell you a couple horror stories briefly. I've gone into so many units that, that were cottages that have been converted to rental units. And, you know, in one, they had a blanket stuffed under the door because the gap between the threshold, bottom of the door was about three inches, and there's no storm door. Well, there's nothing required in this ordinance that there's a storm door. And they did that to keep the cold out and to keep the stove piling up in their common living room, dining room, kitchen area. Um, so this kind of housing standard, it's those things. This is, it's all about safety for tenants. We have some fabulous landlords in our community. We really do. We've worked with them. They see the need. But we also have some that, that really just barely collect their rent. And some of the most basic human needs aren't even covered. Unless I have reasonable suspicion, I can't commit. I, I have no idea. And I think I've only looked at maybe twenty percent of the housing units, the rental units, in the town of Tilton.
Thank you. Microphone two.
Uh, Joe Blesker, Tilton, the end, Clark Road. Um, I was a health officer and will be inspecting this town for fourteen years, and what Catherine Dawson just said, I would totally agree with, that there are a few good landlords, but there are some that the premises that they maintain for rentals are absolutely appalling, just unbelievable. And we really didn't have anything in our ordinances to control that. Even back then, we didn't have any building, uh, codes or anything of that nature. The only thing we had to rely upon was the fire department and the life safety code. So I mean, something is definitely needed. It does not necessarily have to be as extravagant as what we have in front of us with a thirty-page article, but something is definitely needed. Thank you.
Microphone two.
I understand that you're saying all these businesses are bad and horrible, but I'm a landlord, not in Tilton. But we can't control everything. We can't control if someone chooses to not tell us about the gap under their door. There's a, there's a state law, I don't know the R S A, I'm looking up if it's in it, that was changed in January, that says that I can't even go into someone's home and inspect things unless there's an emergency. I can't just make up emergencies to go in and check out the gaps under their doors. Unless they let me know that there's a problem, I can't go in there. So to say that landlords in general don't take care of things, I think is wrong. Because there are a lot of caring landlords out there. And to put it in another perspective, you're, you're sort of blanketing everybody, all the landlords together. You're saying that all these poor tenants, yes, but have you been into other people's homes? What if, what if we said, oh, you're a resident, let's have this law and go in and check out your home and see what the gap under your door? I understand there's a difference that as a landlord you're supposed to take care of those things, but people aren't judging homeowners. I mean, I wouldn't want this law to be committed and inspect my home right now. In fact, you're awake. There's dog hair everywhere, you know? But yet she's allowed to go into someone's home because they rent. The past judgment. That's a poor, poor way to go, because I don't know if this is the time now to do this or not, Mr. Moderator, but I'd like to make the motion to postpone this in the meeting.
Microphone two, another speaker, please. Thank you.
Make a motion. I have a question for you. Sorry.
Go ahead.
My question was, I don't know if this is the right time to do this or not, but I'd like to make the motion to postpone this in the meeting.
Um, I don't believe at this point, having speaking to the motion as you have, that if you were to have risen and had asked to postpone it, it definitely to begin with, that would have been in order. Microphone two.
Jenny Lemon, U C, eighteen Bridge Road. I agree that I think there are some situations that are probably pretty bad, but as a tenant, I would just like to say that I have a great place to live, and I just think that, uh, some of this will have some unintended consequences on my wonderful landlord who's doing a great job. But maybe, you know, I don't know if it's going to pass, but it, I just don't feel like it would be, I don't know. I just, this is your closure for this that he made. Um, and as a tenant also, I would like to know the members at large, how they'll be chosen.
I believe the article right in front of you says that it would be, they would be chosen by the moderator. That would be the...
And when would that happen? How would that work out?
Before April fifteenth. That's right here in the article.
How would we, if I wanted to be the moderator at large, how would I work out doing that?
You would have to, uh, let me tell you, if this article passes, I would try to post something to find out to get a list of names of people who are interested on surveying it. And I would do that. Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Stanley Brown, Cable Hill. I just wanted to reiterate maybe how earlier about my concern about corruption. Um, we might change in some... We might change something like this in the hopes to improve standards and to get ways to make the bad landlord better, but with such a small number of people, that one bad landlord on hold could get two or three people out of this committee and have the power to actually lower standards out of all these places. And any litigation that comes against them, it uses saying, not only that, I have the town board of health or the town committee that agreed with me. And one of the things that we have to remember is market forces rule determine the standards of these places. The place is that, that, or have different ramifications, other than a smaller piece in the town, which would be scary, and that small group of people that they would have to go to is controlled by the board of health.
I'd like to comment on this, Cindy Reinhart. I hear the horror stories from Catherine Dawson, plus the wonderful ones just downtown. We had people, a mother and two children, living in a dirt basement unless somebody calls her up to make them compliant. And most of them are not anonymous, because they don't want to get kicked out themselves. This protects those people. She can, if she has any incentive, she can go in. Now, we're here talking about forming a committee, which is great, and all those committee meetings are public. So the public has the interest to go there, ask questions, and know that everything's about board, and help this committee write what the standards we want in our town, not to, not only to protect the tenants, but the landlords also. Thank you.
Yes, microphone one.
My name is Kristen Vaughn, I'm from Sunday, Silver Lake Road in Tilton. I am also a landlord. And from what I'm understanding about what we just did with the amendment is that right now, we're just deciding whether or not we're going to have a committee or not, which I think is a really, as a landlord, I understand what this thirty-two page article is trying to make happen, but I do think it was a little overzealous. And I think that having a committee, including landlords and a tenant, is a great idea to make something for next year for us to look at. We're not saying, it's my understanding, that we're not saying this board is going to make the rules and that's just how it's going to be. We're saying that the committee is going to upend the rules, and that next year we can take a look at it again. So that's just what I want to say.
Microphone two.
Mike Dagny, one forty-one Clark Road. I'd like to move, make a motion that we postpone this indefinitely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to postpone indefinitely. This is debatable. If you move to postpone this indefinitely for this particular meeting, it means that this article is in fact dead and won't come back this year. And it only requires a majority vote. Yes, Scott, who's at the microphone first? Oh, no, about microphone two.
Mr. Moderator, I'd speak against this. This is our only chance that we as townspeople have a business meeting. And that's what we're here for. Last year, we tabled this, and we see what we got ourselves into. I think we should have the townspeople, I don't agree with the makeup of the board, I've told, the makeup of this committee, but I've told the board that I'd like to see a change. What we're talking about right now isn't a change. But I speak against that, because if we just keep putting things down the road, we don't, we don't solve anything. I mean, if we have issues, then if we put the townspeople, we put a good makeup on this committee, then we'll come back, we'll come back with some kind of recommendation, and then at that time, we can vote it up or vote it down. Thank you.
Okay, let me just interrupt everyone here. I think some discussions have been taking place here. The last actual motion that was made was the one made by Pat Clark to actually, to permit a landlord to be put onto this committee if they live within a ten mile radius. So at this point, the actual motion on the floor that needs to be passed would in fact be that one of Pat's. If we now look at that, because that is what is the case, and then we say postpone indefinitely, what we're really postponing right now is Pat's amendment, not the entire article. Are there any other questions or comments? The motion right now to postpone indefinitely deals specifically with the amendment that Pat gave. All those in favor of postponing indefinitely the amendment made by Pat, which required the landlord to live within a ten mile radius in Tilton, please say aye.
Aye.
Point of order. Go ahead, Mr. [inaudible]. I'm confused. What happened to the First Amendment that the selectmen made? Did that ever get resolved? We adopted already Article number four amendment. That then became the main article. Now, Pat stood up to amend that article, which is what we've been discussing. And his amendment was to change the composition so that the landlord could be appointed to the committee so long as they live within a ten mile radius. We did, and I accept responsibility, we got away from that, but the actual motion that is currently on the floor that we have not yet voted on is his amendment. So I'm going to go back. All those that want to kill Pat's amendment by postponing indefinitely, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Okay, so that amendment dies. The original article is now on the floor. I'm sorry, it doesn't die. The motion fails, and Article four is still alive at this point.
I believe the point of order is the, is the Pat's amendment, and I would like to call Pat's amendment to vote.
Call the question.
That is correct. When we failed to pass the postponed indefinitely, that means that Pat's article is still on the floor for a vote. Jim Roxy just called a question. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor of calling a question on Pat's amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, Pat's amendment, let me read it. Article four, to see if the town will amend the motion to have the landlord be a resident within a ten mile radius from the town of Tilton. All those in favor of Pat's amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'm confused. I'm going to ask for a standing vote. On this side over here, please, if you have your voter card, stand and hold it up if you are in favor of Pat's amendment. Just this side over here right now. Remember, you must be inside the railing to be counted. This is on Pat's amendment. Okay, and those on this side, if you're in favor of Pat's amendment. I don't think I'm in doubt, but I want to get the numbers anyway. Okay, all those opposed, please stand and hold your guard up. It's overwhelming. Thank you. I declare that Pat's motion passed. So now, Article number four in front of you is, would say, a landlord, and we would then remove, must be a resident of the town of Tilton, and insert the language, must be a resident within a ten mile radius of Tilton. Yes, sir?
Question?
Yeah, I, again. Dan Miles from Main Street. Again, I think it's great that we do this, but you have to go to town line to town line. So if it's a body, if you're a landlord in San Quentin, you're twelve miles out, is that really fair? You need to go all the way to the next town. Any town or body, these, this town should be included, not just ten miles.
Mr. Moderator?
Okay, Pat, on to Gina.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer an amendment.
Go for it.
I'd like to amend where it says the board will consist of two members of the board of health, the selectmen. I would like to amend it to the board of, board will consist of one member of the board of health, as per RSA New Hampshire RSA one twenty-eight-three, the fire chief who's designated, a land use individual, a landlord within a ten mile radius, and three members at large, one preferably a tenant. That's to go along with what Scott was saying, in light of what Catherine read from the RSA.
Okay, Pat is moving this, and we have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Catherine Dawson. So basically, on this article, she is changing line one, and the second paragraph, the one member, and increase in the number of members at large to three. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of this change, I will read the second paragraph one more time. The court will consist of one member of the board of health, selectmen, as per Hennate, New Hampshire RSA one twenty-eight colon three, the fire chief who's designated, a land use individual, a landlord that must live within a ten mile radius of Tilton, and three members at large, one preferably a tenant. All those in question?
It's one. On the council committee?
Two thousand justice. On the council committee, I'm turning it up a deep. Would you nine people to turn the committee to break a deadlock? Would you one more, either landlord or tenant or something? I come up with an answer, just, just a question. One, one member of the board of health, fire chief, one land use landlord, three owners, and a tenant.
No, the tenant is one of the.
I'll refer to it, okay, sorry.
Mr. [inaudible].
Okay. I'll read it one more time, because I don't want to get confused. The board will consist of one member of the board of health, selectmen, as per New Hampshire RSA one twenty-eight colon three, the fire chief who's designated, a land use individual, and a landlord who must live within a ten mile radius of the town of Tilton, and three members at large, one preferably a tenant. Yes?
Aye. I have a question. I'm not sure if anything's even been thought, oh, sorry, I think it's Catherine. I don't know if anything's been thought to the fact that perhaps we could put some language in here, so that the tenant is of the landlord that's on the board.
I can take your comments and such that when I make those choices and make up the committee, that I could do that. But right now, we have an amendment that we're voting on, and you were suggesting now another amendment. So I would like to just pass this current amendment, and I can take your information if the motion passes or Article four passes, that I will take that into consideration. Any other questions before we vote? Do I need to read this again?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, so now, the main motion includes those new numbers with one person from the selectmen of board of health, three members at large. Any additional? I got two people jumping at the microphone, and the other one over here. I don't know whether you get it before they get it or not. What?
The question basically has that voted on and finalized.
We are now at the main article, which is Article four as amended.
I propose to, I, the motion postponed after making this article. And in this way, what we can do is decide right now whether we want to go further in this discussion. Someone said earlier, if we postpone it again, that we're not doing anything, we're not accomplishing anything that we do have. As a matter of fact, by postponing it, in essence, we're killing it for right now. And one of the reasons I would like to do this and reiterate the issues that we're talking about is talking to people who live in Fitzfield.
Do we have a second, first of all? Do we have a second? We do, okay.
Second.
Housing, housing in Fitzfield is down because the tax is very high. Main Street, we really have, our powers, private, we're doing well. Main Street's one of the strongest that we have here. It seems like we're fixing the problem that is over. That's why I think there's a motion.
Microphone two.
I was going to call the question, that's all I was.
Well, since, since now the question, the motion that has been made is to postpone it definitely, that is debatable, if anyone else wishes to speak, we can go right in.
Kristen Vaughn, Tilton. Once again, I strongly disagree with the motion. I think that we do need the committee. We're not asking to, to pass the different articles that are in here regarding what the standards are going to be. We're just asking for the committee. And I think that right now landlords and tenants, I think, I think that it's a very good committee, and I think we're not asking for anything other than the committee, and I strongly agree with that.
Okay, then let's go ahead and vote on this. If we move to postpone indefinitely, you're basically killing Article four. If you vote no, then the discussion can continue on Article four as amended. All those in favor of postponing it definitely, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
No.
Article, or the motion fails, so we're back to Article four. Mr. Davidson?
Call the question, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Pat Clark. Okay, now on Article four. Excuse me. All those in favor of ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, now on Article four. I will read the entire article, just so that everyone is clear, to see if the town will vote to create a Tilton housing standard board. The first members of the board shall be appointed by the town moderator of the board April fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. The board will consist of one member of the board of health, the selectmen, or New Hampshire RSA one twenty-eight colon three, the fire chief who's or his designated, is or her designated, a land use individual, a landlord who must live within a ten mile radius, and three members at large, one preferably a tenant. The board shall review and amend, if necessary, proposed Tilton housing standard ordinance, standard ordinance. Hold a minimum of two properly noticed public hearings, and we'll have the warrant article ready for, for February one, two thousand seventeen, deadline for town meeting. Okay, all those, excuse me.
Article open for discussion.
No, we just closed debate.
Debate was closed.
All those in favor of Article four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have an issue later. Article five. To see if the town will vote to amend the Tilton tattoo ordinance to include body pairs. Yes?
I'm thinking of making a motion to move Article five open for discussion.
Second.
And move and seconded to move Article five in the floor for discussion. Microphone two.
No, Jeff.
Do you have a point of order?
I just wanted to make a motion to go to the territory.
I just wanted to make a motion to go to protect my vote on Article Four.
Uh, I'll tell you what, since there, I can allow this motion first, let's discuss with that, and then I'll come right back to you.
Okay.
Article Five. I believe there is an amendment.
The reason that I asked to help this one article is the state law requires a health inspector to inspect any place that does body piercing, body art. Oh. Um, the ordinance that the town passed for tattoo parlors a number of years ago does not include body piercing. However, 90% of what you expect for tattoo parlors includes needles, hygiene, sterilization, also pertains to body piercing. So this is why I asked to have that added to that existing ordinance. So when I go in there, I'm really expecting for body piercing as well.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Four, please say aye. Article Five, excuse me, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Five passes. I'm gonna take a five minute recess. Now we have a few people who have needs to be met, thank you. Okay, folks, if you can take your seats. Well, folks are getting, they're getting to your seats. Um, I'm getting a list of names down here in front of any individuals who are interested in serving on this board. If you, I've got a sheet of paper down here, and we'll create a couple more, depending on any of your name, address, phone number, and if you have an email, email, as well as what seat or address it is, as example, as a landlord or as a tenant. And I'm gonna put the, uh, the sheet of paper right over in front of Sydney, so that we'll get started on the meeting in just a little bit. She has a question, mic two.
I, I wanted to make a motion to protect my vote on Article Four.
Um, the, the actual motion should be to restrict reconsideration on Article Four, it has been made and seconded by Warren Noah. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion, motion carries, we shall not reconsider Article Four. Now on to Article Six. Scott Davis.
I'd like to make a motion to restrict reconsideration on Article Three, please.
Okay, it has been moved by Scott Davis to restrict consideration on Article Number Three and seconded by Joe Jessica. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration on Article Three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article, restriction or reconsideration on Article Three has passed, we shall not reconsider Article Three. Article Number Six, to see if the town will vote to raise the sum appropriate, the sum of $7,000. I'm gonna read the original article. To hire an engineering consultant to assess existing structures located within Tilton for the purposes of housing at Tilton Community Center. The center could provide space to nonprofit organizations, the Tilton Community Center's expenses would be offset by rental income, program fees, local, state, and federal grants, the article is not included in the operating budget. I'm gonna call on Pat Hudson-Tina.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to the article. To see if the town will raise appropriate sum of $7,000 to assess existing structures located within Tilton for the purpose of housing at Tilton Community Center. The center could provide space to nonprofit organizations, the Tilton Community Center's expenses would be offset by rental income, program fees, local, state, and federal grants. This article is not included in the operating budget, it's recommended by the select, selectmen.
Um, without objection, I will accept the amended article, which is to strike out the words "to hire an engineering consultant." It, uh, does the second, I'm also agreeing, Catherine is seconding that. Uh, Pat, would you like to speak to the motion, please?
I hope I did this proud. Originally, we were looking into, um, to explore the possibility of a community center. The community center would hold nonprofits such as, hopefully, the youth assistance program, be a building where we could possibly vote at one time instead of using high school meetings, things like, um, the semi-youth group is looking for a place for satellite office, satellite room in Tilton, that's one possibility. This is all brainstorming. So the opportunity came about when the Trinity Church offered us, uh, to make an offer on the church itself. We thought about that long and hard, and we wanted to go out and hire an engineer to see what it would take, and what structure it would be, and how much it would cost, and if it would be cost effective to the town of Tilton to enter. And we agreed with them, whether it be $1, $10, or $20,000. We wanted to see what that was going to be like. And, uh, they have a cellular tower, um, that we vetted through from turning and our finance director. It is not, it's off the table, it's not cost effective to the town of Tilton. We would never have entered into an agreement with the church to purchase the, the church at this time, not even looking into hiring an engineer, because it's not cost effective just from that agreement. But there are other buildings in the town of Tilton which we would like to explore. We all, we have been looking for years and years and years for a community building, We all, we have been looking for years and years and years for a community building, and, uh, we have an opportunity now with a couple of buildings to explore them, and that's just what this is. We want to be able to have that opportunity, uh, if a building comes about, that we have that opportunity to look at it and have someone come in there that has a little bit more knowledge about buildings and know exactly what it's going to take to renovate, uh, what the structure's like, what the electrical's like, and everything else, so that we can come next year to you folks and say, "We have a plan, and this is what our plan is. This is who we have that would like to come in, that would be renting, this is the grants that we have, this is the business plan, this is all that we have that we have for you next year." But without having anything in the budget to be able to do that, we're kind of locked in. And that's what this article is allowing us to do. If we have the opportunity within the next year, in the summer, to be able to look at some of these buildings, we would like to have that opportunity to explore further, uh, what these building would be to entertain and to structure part of it. What, would it be worth, would it be, and that's what that is about.
Any questions or comments? Yes, microphone two.
Karen Shepherd, Urst Drive. Just for the record, I work for the, uh, Pines Community Center operated by the Tilton Northfield Recreation Department. I think that trying to set up another community center in our community, just because we need one on, and because the community center we have is located in Northfield is, it's, it's, you're, you're reinventing the wheel to do this. We have been in touch with many organizations, trying to get them to come in. We haven't been successful so far, and hearing back from them, "Well, you have a community center. You have a recreation department, it's been in operation since nineteen fifty-four. We serve the towns of Tilton and Northfield." And I just think this is redundant.
Yeah. Captain Pat. Pat Clark, or if I have microphone two.
Alright, Pat Clark, um, I too wanted to be against this, because we, the Blue Case Services, we have the Pines Community Center. This kind of thing comes up from time to time. I, I did take the time to call Pat Constance Teague here today about a number of things, which one I already talked off. This was another one, and, and, uh, we had a long talk about it. And one of the issues that she said it was, was that the, the police chief, Bob Corrner, wanted to try to introduce a type of program, like a dependent program, we talked about. It's a really good, uh, healthy program to help kids, especially with drug problems we have right now. Be able to help teenagers, be able to plug into the program, really help for that age. Now, I will tell you, for being on the board at the Pines Community Center from before, from these times, you know, I was on the board for YAP for a time, in fact, I was direct by YAP for a time, but it's very difficult, the upper middle school, high school years, kids, really don't want to be around adults, it's very hard to steer them into anything, so regardless of where you have it, it's gonna be a challenge. But it's a necessary kind of a program. Uh, I als- also was told that, that, uh, Bob Corrner may not have had a, a good, uh, feedback from the Pines Community Center about doing a program within the Pines Community Center. Pat recommended that I speak to Bob during the break, I spoke to Chief Corrner, and he said they had subsequent talks, things could work out, they could do a program at the Pines for this kind of thing. I've also talked with, with, uh, Jim Goan, the director, over at the Pines Community Center, and he confirmed that, that there, there could be a way of working that kind of thing out. I think that it's gonna be, at fifteen seconds, it's redundant. I think we don't have the money to do this, and I would like to go on this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Pat Constance Teague, and then, Jay.
I just don't want this to be about the Pemi Youth Group, and this is not going to tend to be about the Pemi Youth Group. The Pemi Youth Group has a, uh, the organization is in Plymouth, New Hampshire. They have been somewhat like our senior center in Tilton, they staggered out very small, and they've been very, very successful with ground zero to donations and grants, and they've been extremely successful. Is there a need in, in, uh, in the town of Tilton for that age group? Absolutely. Have we gone back and, and asked for programs and looked for programs, whether it be at the Tilton Sports Center, whether it be at the Pines Community? We've looked at different ways to get different programs in. Now, even if we didn't, uh, explore a community, community center in Pemi Youth Group, and it took two years, and Pemi Youth Group could avail themselves of another building in town and still take off. It's not about the Pemi Youth Group. If they want to come to Tilton, they'll come to Tilton. Um, it's not, the Board of Selectmen is not saying, "We're making this room for the Pemi Youth Group." I want to make that very, very clear. This is about a community building, about a community center. It was downtown, and you all know what goes on downtown, we see it every day. I could be sitting in Paul's having a cup of coffee, and I could see what goes on at the bench across the street. Those are the, those are the kids that we want to get off the street, and those are the kids that we want to get into some type of program, whether it be sports, whether it be, um, any kind of, any kind of activity, after classes. Yes, that's part of the program, but is it all about the, I see the sign rolling up. Is it all about it? No, it's not, but we would like the opportunity to explore that.
Okay, Jay.
Jane O'Leary, I also want to say this is not about the Pines, and, um, I want to make that very, very clear. It has nothing to do with the Pines, the programs go on there. It has to do with entirely different programs. I'll give you an example. Remember a few years ago, we came to, when we asked for twenty thousand dollars, saving money, and we said we'd never come back to the town again for Hilton Senior Center? Well, we were granted that twenty thousand dollars, and I assure you, Hilton Senior Center has operated, now it's only in grants that we've gone out and got, and that's the kind of thing. This is asking for, is asking for seven thousand dollars to look into a facility within downtown Hilton that will help with the drug issues, will help with the mentoring, the tutoring. I'm on the school budget committee. One of the big issues of raising monies for the schools is that we are tutoring students. They need that, they need mentoring, and we're not getting that. The Pines, the Pines is not, is a recreation, it's not for that sort of thing. So what, the town of Tilton has asked for is seven thousand dollars to go out and look for a place in the downtown area so that students from the high school, students from the middle school, the elementary school can walk to a place where they can help. There was a recent questionnaire taken with the YAP group, and, and the comment was that they wanted a place downtown where they, if young people, could go and get help there. Yes, the Pemi Youth Center has been mentioned. One, one if, we have another group called Every Child Is Ours. They're looking for space, and I believe that they could go into the Pines. However, if I had somebody who could rent from them, then that group would be kicked out. They're now using Hilton Senior Center. I just want to say, this is to go out and look for a place to provide a much bigger service.
Thank you. Microphone two.
How about that? Nancy Drazza? Okay? Alright, um, I'd like to call the question.
Uh, okay, uh, you have one person along behind you, I would like to have let that one person speak, because right now we had, uh, I'd like to ask, please, but I have microphone two. No, we'll call the question.
Thank you, Karen Floyd Urst Drive, um, Karen Floyd Shepherd Urst Drive. We have not ruled out any of the people who have approached us, whether it's Every Child Is Ours, the Pemi Youth Center. We have talked with all of them, we even prepared a contract for, um, Every Child Is Ours, but we haven't had a response to that. We would be happy to work with those people. As for the idea that we can kick somebody out, what a space that we, um, allow them to have, that is completely false. We could not do that, because we would have a contract with those people. Whoever is the head of that space, there will be a contract that both parties would be bound by, so we could not just summarily kick them out.
Okay, microphone one.
Lauren Hunter. East Mates for you, Tilton. I'm a supporter of the Pines, and I would like to also explore and support this article, because I think we do have a problem that's big enough to look into more than one place. We have a huge drug epidemic, and they like, the people that we serve or would like to serve with those, um, issues may not be the people that we necessarily want to be at the Pines with other children. I see this as young adults too, this isn't just for little kids, or middle school, or even high school kids. I think there's a lot of people that are out on our streets with nothing to do, um, and I know that there are groups in the community who are trying to help them, and if this is a way to give them a place, clubhouse type thing or whatever, that may be valuable to look into. I don't think it should be instead of the Pines. I think the Pines is our first area of support, because we've invested in that, we've got the people running that, and we've supported that. But this could be in addition to that, and that was, that's the way I'm looking at it. Thank you.
Okay, I think it's time that we can go ahead with the vote on this. Article Six, "To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of seven thousand dollars to assess existing structures located within Tilton for the purposes of housing of the community center. The center could provide space to nonprofit organizations, the Tilton Community Center's expenses would be offset by rental income, program fees, local state and federal grants, the article is not included in the operating budget." All those in favor of Article Six, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
I believe that Article passed. Let's only declare. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, we have, we have a question.
Certainly, we're asking for the permission of those on, uh, Article Six. Who support this article, please take your voter cards and stand. Everyone, please. Those opposed, please stand with your voter cards. Remember, if you want to have your vote counted, you need to be inside the railing votes. The vote is forty-four, yes, eighteen, no, so the motion does carry. Article Seven. "To see if the town will raise appropriate sum of thirty-five thousand dollars to be added to the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund established in two thousand twelve. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget, and it was recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee, I'm gonna call on John Scanlon." Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move this to the floor for discussion. Is there a second? Seconded by Pat Constance Teague. Okay, John.
Okay, as we know, we do this every year, uh, we put thirty-five thousand dollars in Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, which, basically what it does is it makes it so that we will have the money to buy the equipment that we need that will already be set aside, as opposed to coming to the voters at a town meeting and asking for a large sum.
Microphone number two. Call the question. All those in favor of Article Seven, I don't believe we need to have to vote on that. Article Seven, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Article Seven passes, on to Article Eight. "To see if the town will vote "to clarify the purpose of the existing reconstruction and/or repair of town roads, streets and bridges Capital Reserve Fund established in two thousand five, Article Eight, and amended in Article, uh, two thousand seven, Article twenty-one, to be named "the Town Roads, Bridges and Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund for the purposes of construction, reconstruction or repair, and further "to name the Board of Selectment's agents for the said fund." Moderator, I'm gonna call Peter Fogg.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article Eight to the floor.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Catherine Dawson. Peter.
Basically, this article is looking to add sidewalks to the former Roads, Bridges Capital Reserve Fund. We're looking to do an improvement plan, where we're gonna be doing sidewalks annually, and we're trying to create a fund to draw out of instead of a line out of an empty budget.
Any questions or discussion? Microphone number two.
I'm here again, John Luskin, Tilton, Park Road. Uh, one thing about this article that, uh, I'm not really sure of, and I'm not assuming there's some kind of an answer. When you add sidewalks to it, you obviously have something in mind to do that, and I'd like to know the magnitude of what you have in mind. So like, in other words, you could complete the entire fund in one year, just replacing all the sidewalks downtown. So, and, when this was originally created, this was for the purpose of the bad roads and stuff that we'd have to deal with, so to take the money and put it in the sidewalks when the roads were still terrible, or some of them were, uh, not necessarily to be the way you want it to be. So my question is essentially, what have you got in mind with the sidewalk thing?
Okay, Peter, which, can you respond?
Yeah, we've had several years with, uh, no sidewalk maintenance. It's not our intent to disregard roads and bridges, we're gonna continue to do those, but we're also looking to put together a plan where each year, we start doing sections of sidewalks through town. Um, as you walk around town, you'll see some of the current, uh, conditions are pretty deplorable. So we're just trying to get into a program where each year, we'll do a certain amount of sidewalks, no different than we do a certain amount of, uh, road paving.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those on Article Eight, I'll read it from the beginning. "To see if the town will vote and clarify the purpose of the existing reconstruction "and/or repair of towns, town roads, streets and bridges Capital Reserve Fund established in "the year two thousand five, Article Eight, and amended in two thousand seven, Article twenty-one, to be named "the Town Roads, Bridges and Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund "for the purposes of construction, reconstruction or repair, and further to name the Board of Selectment's agents for said fund." All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Article Eight carries. We're on to Article Nine. Anybody got a poll going on what time this meeting's gonna get open? Article Nine, "To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of one hundred and one thousand dollars "to be added to the Town Roads, Bridges, Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget." I'm gonna call on Peter Fogg.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article Nine to the floor for discussion.
So moved, is there a second? Seconded by Catherine Dawson. By the way, Jerry was working today. Okay, Peter.
Historically, we've been running, I think, somewhere- Historically, we've been running, I think somewhere around $65,000 a year to do road work. This year, we're looking to do $36,000 worth of sidewalk work as a way to get the sidewalk improvements going. Therefore, the total for this year is $101,000. We still have some paving projects on roads that will be occurring.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll read Article nine. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $101,000 to be added to the Town Roads Bridges Sidewalks Capital Reserve Fund. This appropriation is not included in the operating budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Article number nine passes, I so declare. Article number ten. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $20,000 to be added to the reevaluation capital reserve fund established in 2002. And I'm going to call on Pat Constantino.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article ten to the floor for discussion.
Is there a second? Catherine Dawson again. Okay, Pat.
This is an article that we have every year. We put $20,000 in every year. Our evaluation, reevaluation costs about a hundred, a little over $100,000. At the end of the fifth year, we pay a little bit more than $20,000. So every year we put $20,000 in and the fifth year it's just a little bit more. Reevaluation is scheduled for 2019.
Microphone two. Call the question. Seeing as no discussion has happened yet, uh, is there anyone here who wishes to go to the microphone? Okay, I'm going to go right to the question. To see if, Article number ten, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $20,000 to be added to the reevaluation capital reserve fund established in 2002. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? I declare that Article number ten passes. Let's see if this one goes through this quickly. Article number eleven. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of the budget committees recommended sum of $5,445,573 for the general municipal operating operations as posted as a part of the warrant at MS7 form. The selectman recommended $5,438,686. This article does not include the special or individual warrant articles addressed separately for the purposes of discussion. I'm going to go to Wayne Brock.
Mr. Moderator, I move that this, please this, this board has the floor of discussion.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Jane.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to make a mo, uh, amendment to this mo, this motion, please.
Yeah, um, first, uh, as the anchor of the motion there, Wayne, do you have anything you want to say before the amendment?
Speaking of amendments.
Needless to say, one of the things we're going to need to find out and get a total of any monies that we have added so far today. Pat, go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget committee's recommended budget amount by reducing line items 01-82-4312-99-760. Sidewalk construction from $36,000 to zero.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second? Seconded by Peter. Or, and Jane. Okay, would you, uh, like to speak to that, Pat?
I'm, I was just told under moderator's rule number thirteen, we cannot make amendment to the budget to zero and be accepted.
No, but that, uh, the moderator's rules when it says you can't move the budget to zero, what it means is you cannot take and say you want the entire budget to be zero.
Okay.
You can't share all the line items.
Okay.
I believe that.
All right, then I'll stick with the original motion. Uh, what this does is if you just approved Article, uh, the two articles, one adding the sidewalk construction in the reserve on the highways, um, and we add $101,000 to include that $36,000 in that reserve fund. What would, we had added it into the operating budget. We want to take it out of the operating budget because it's now in the reserve fund.
Any questions, comments about the amendment to remove the $36,000 from line item 01824312-99-760, the sidewalk construction fund? I see no questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Okay, that is one accomplished one. Wayne, yes, sir?
I would, uh, I would like to move that we amend the budget to include the $15,000 that was put in on by the legislative body to take over the trishback situation.
Um, okay, Wayne has moved to increase the budget by $15,000 because of Article number three. Yes, I'm going for just a moment.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Is this a point of order?
A point of order. I believe we already added the $15,000. Uh, I've reported $15,000 as that passed as part of that Article three.
Okay, so that, that amendment is not needed. Mr. Pearson, are you there? Do you have the latest number?
Yes.
Okay. Can you repeat that with a microphone?
That's correct.
Okay, and that is actually appears right now to be less than both of those amounts shown above. So your, 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 your final figure is, is that amount?
That's correct.
Any questions, comments, amendments? Yes?
Uh, Karen Shepard, uh, Bird's Drive. I just wanted some clarification on what it is that has been taken out specifically of, um, the original proposed number.
Uh, Mr. Pearson, can you please explain?
Are you looking?
Uh, Pat?
They asked him specifically for the Pines. The Pines is $60,000 salary and fifty.
No, the question was, looking at the original proposed budgets, one being $5,444.
The $5 million figure includes what we just took out, $36,000. And it added in the warrant articles that we... Oh, it didn't add it in the warrant. Just $36,000.
Okay, we'll get this straightened out.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
We had to add the $15,000 that we were, uh, going in Scott's motion amendment. And then we just, so we had $15,544,573. Subtracted that, I'm sorry, added that, and then we just subtracted $36,000.
And the other articles which we had to do with the, um...
The capital reserve funds?
Capital reserve fund, $20,000.
No, those are not part of the operating, those are not part of the operating budget.
Okay, so Article, uh...
We're just doing the operating budget.
This is just the operating budget, okay. Uh, Mr. Clark, microphone two.
Uh, in, in looking over the budget, um, for this year, I noticed that it looked as if the budget committee really didn't have any adjustments made where they're, they're pretty much on everything in the selected page of the budget. And typically, what we do is we look to you to give us some feedback on what your concerns are. Are there any concerns or adjustments that you think of we made by any one of you or some feedback of the process? Because it'd be nice to get some idea from you as to how things should really go. I mean, have you really deliberated and have a thorough job of looking at every line and figuring out exactly where we ought to be?
Pat, that's an excellent question. Yes, we did. We spent a lot of time going over each item. And we took a look at, trying to keep the budget and keep some funding over low that was presented last year. And that's what we took a look at. Then we took a look at the warrant articles. We figured out where the warrant articles would take us. The acceptance is always be possibly good because we knew that to school.
You up, sir?
I'm just finishing up. Did you take a look at the budget? We took a look at the warrant articles. We deliberated on it, we had some lively discussion. Some of the articles we had, we added money to. We took a look at service and upside agencies such as Genesis. Looked at what they had provided for us over the last year. They funded the company, bringing their shares up to a point. We also took a look at those items that we had little control over. Health insurance is killing us. Visiting is killing everybody. Bringing raises up. So we tried to maintain that budget. One of the articles we took a look at was the highway, the sidewalk issue. And how we best to provide for sidewalks. And we decided to put it in the operating budget. And then if and when the legislative body passed the $101,000 to take that money out to further balance that budget. And I think we did a real good job looking at that and providing you with a budget that is lean, mean, and comfortably in expectations.
Uh, microphone two.
Mr. Moderator, I have a question about revenues. On line thirty-two twenty, line is the owner of vehicle. We were up, uh, over six percent this last year, but then still the revenue line is the same as it was last year. Can you explain that? The vehicles are going up, so in turn of, I would think in turn of vehicle registration that would also be going up. And then, uh, that's my first question. I'll let that answer the number seven.
Uh, I can answer one. But let me remind, last year when I recorded it, that wasn't the monies that we had to pay out to the state. The state gets partial on that. We're on a one-check system now. So that's revenue bringing in. We then transmit monies to the state for their portion of those vehicle registrations. But what I reported in has, has come out of my desk. We also had, um, businesses move their vehicle locations to another cap.
Okay, so you just use the same estimate as what we used in the past?
No, I, 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 I get it off my reports, absolutely. Um, but we did have a lot of movement. Um, we used to have a lot of, um, registrations for, um, we were looking for rental cars. We no longer have those.
And my second question is, we got some revenues also, Mr. Moderator, on line thirty-four-one, thirty-four-six, income from other departments. That number's, uh, reduced down, we used to say number ten, and that number was up seven percent this last year for the estimates.
Is there someone here who can answer that?
That would be because of the ash credit that we received as part of our, we're closing the Ash landfill down in Franklin. But as a member of the co-op, uh, we called the Ash landfill. Each member of the community got back a certain amount of credit for ash that would have been dumped there that's now dumped in Rochester. And it, that was done by tons that had been delivered over the life of the project. And we received it last year, this year we did not receive it. It was a one-time payment.
Mr. Moderator, they had the amount of that credit?
Um, yes. Question is, can you, what was the amount of the credit last year that we did not concede this year?
It's a, the finance officer informed me that it was approximately $117,000.
And we're not going to receive that, Mr. Moderator?
That is a one-time dispersment from the co-op. Each member of the community got their share based on the tonnage that they had delivered to the incinerator and the cells of ash that went to the landfill in Franklin.
Are we going to be, uh...
Excuse me, you have another question?
Yes. Are we going to be way off on this assessment and if there's a hundred and some thousand dollars to come up for one time, maybe the unmatch present line?
Answer is no.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Uh, if appropriate, I propose an amendment to our number one.
Okay, uh, Mr. Justin, he proposes amendment to Article...
In light of our vote on Article number three, to remove the purple bags and put it on to the taxation. This amendment is as follows. I make a motion to amend the budget committee's recommended budget by increasing line item Sanitation recycling by the amount of $72,000.
Is there a se, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Pat Constantino, moved by Judge Justin to increase line item by increasing the budget of that line item by $72,000. Now, Mr. Uh... Okay, uh, hey, good. Good, someone? We had, I was informed that I did not take any vote of zeroing out the line item of removing the $36,000, uh, for the sidewalks down to zero. So I would like to do that now, if that was fine. Going back to the amendment on Article nine, which was to reduce, uh, line item 01-82-4312-99-760, the sidewalk construction from $36,000 down to zero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. That passes. Back to Article eleven. Mr. Justin is proposing to increase the budget by $72,000. Uh, would you please like to discuss that?
The reason for the separate $2,000 number is that the proposed contract and the lease on to sell requires that there's a payment of $8,000 per month for that service. And $8,000 per month from now till the end of the year, it adds up to $72,000. We're trying to get it forward, but...
Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, all those in favor of the amendment by adding $72,000 to line item 01-82-4323.99-860, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. I now have a new number, which, uh, looks like $5,496,573. That's if my math is correct. That is, yes. Everyone else who seems to agree. Four, five million, four ninety-six, five seventy-three. Are there any more amendments? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article number eleven. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article number 11, I will read the article. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate, the Budget Committee's recommended some budget, and now the new number in there is $5,496,573 for the general municipal operations as posted as a part of the warrant at MS form, uh, MS-7 form. The Selectmen recommended $5,438,686, but this article does not include the special individual warrants, like it was attached, but the new number does, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Budget passes, I so declare. Do we have any more business?
Mr. Moderator?
More announcements?
May I take just one minute here?
One minute, and then I'm sorry, hand over the case.
I would just like to take the opportunity on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to publicly thank our town hall staff, each year, this book gets put together by hand, printed, collated, uh, all digitally in our computers to save taxpayers' money, it's an incredibly amount of work, and every year, year after year, we spend tons of time, extra time above and beyond, putting it together, so I would love to thank Tim Pearson, Joyce Polwile, and Gail Bestet for their efforts every year, thank you.
Microphone two.
I just take a moment here, relative to the, uh, page forty-three, the trustees of the trust fund report. There's no line number next to this, but three quarters of the way down, it shows a, a line, and the reason I ask this, I was trustee of trust fund for many years, and I'm just curious, what this trustee dispersal account is? Anybody here?
All right, let me ask our finance director, can you please answer that question?
I, I had a trustee point to me, so I guess I'm, I'd like to answer this, um, so, at one point, there was a separate account, uh, kept for, um, deposits and then dispersals, and over time, there was a small balance that was built up in there, and the trustees opted to use the, this one account that's broken up into sub-accounts to reflect that, rather than having a whole separate bank account which made transactions easier, so it was in one place, and it can be, uh, still kept and looked at separately, so you can see any money going into it or coming out of it.
It's not like just an account of convenience, is that what you're saying?
Essentially, so, so they, they have two financial institutions, they deal with the stuff of the money.
Okay, and then one other question I had, had to do with the, uh, the income of this roughly $2 million in some of the trust fund itself, uh, what indicated at any point of the year was just under $3,000, that's clearly 1/10th, 1/10th percent. Is that all of that, uh, $2 million of the trust funds?
The, the capital reserve funds, um, have, it has a very low percentage rate, it's, uh, they're guaranteed funds, and, uh, we look for opportunities to increase it, but, um, it's not much right now, uh, we're in an interest rate, and a rising interest rate environment, we haven't seen it improve yet, we are looking at other, constantly looking at other options, but these funds have to be kept liquid, uh, as the school and other entities require payments during the year, so they can't be in any sort of long-term uh, be able to activate something that is essentially like savings account.
So what you're saying is you have all these funds in the, a basic savings account, Franklin Savings Fund? Savings Fund, uh, Franklin Savings Bank?
It's, it's a municipal money bank, it's...
And that's all we get, is 1/10th of 1%?
No, it's not 1/10th of 1%, uh, I have to...
1% of $20, $20, $20, $20, $20.
It is, uh, well, you have to also look at, that's the ending balance, you have to look at the transactions during the year, the school has money that comes in, runs out, but, uh, I believe the, uh, the annual interest rate is 1/8%.
Do you have any more questions, Mr. Pearson? Do we have any other business to tell me for? Yes, microphone two.
Karen Shepard, Birds Drive, this is, um, a plea, at the moment, the Tilton Northfield Recreation Council is made up mostly of residents of Northfield, as a Tilton resident, I would like to see more Tilton residents run for the board, to be on the board, so that we're getting equal representation for both towns, so this is a plea to people to run for the board, the elections are in September, be there.
Anyone else, because I have two little short ones. Okay, the first one is, if there's anyone else in here who has an interest in serving on that housing board, you have a sheet of paper down here, please leave your name, address, phone number, email address if you've got one, uh, we were already getting a good interest, I'm sure that if the committee, which is only five, uh, others who are interested should be there anyway. Uh, the other announcement is, on, uh, Friday, April 22nd, which is Earth Day, will be the grand opening of the area across from the police station once known as Ernie's, that project has been completed, uh, as you probably know, the Conservation Commission was, used funds from the change of use tax, and we use that money to buy the properties, we've had $200,000 plus cleanup grant that came from the EPA, in addition to that, uh, CRDC, the Capital Region Development Corporation, had over another $40,000, we also had some volunteers, people from the Conservation Commission, as well as the Woodstock Trail people, and the project is basically done, you'll notice that the, uh, the gate has now been reopened, and the official name of the property is the Salmon Run Conservation Area, and to answer questions before other people pass, the intent is that the, uh, the seating in there was done with hopefully low-growing grasses with wild flowers, and it is not the intent to keep that mode so it looks like a lawn, it is not a park, it's a conservation area. So we would, we, you please know that on Earth Day, April 27th, we will have a grand opening, and look for some announcements on the website, you will find out who's going to be there. Thank you. Uh, one more, Mr. Justin? Two more?
Well, I'm, I'm one, uh, I just wanted to remind everybody that on the 25th of June, it's going to be Old Home Day here, and so, and we'll have parades at the, uh, the standard barbecue and possum down at, uh, the pines, this year, the theme is lights camera, action, night of the movies, so if you're going to have a club, if you know someone familiar, pick your favorite movie, whether it be Munchkins or whatever, it's going to be a lot of fun, and it's not hungry.
And?
I have two small housekeeping ones, one is John Sutcliffe, and I wanted to mention that Riverfront Park, the debt was paid off in January this year. And the other thing is, there's quite a bit of, um, history's up back, if you all want to take one or two with you, feel free.
Microphone two.
Yes, uh, Pat Park, uh, I just wanted to say that relative of Salmon Run Park, for people to go over that, it's almost called the Ernie's Auto Park, so, um, it's, it's right across from the PD, and, and I want to make a special, uh, note that there are two people from the Conservation Board that were down there almost every day working to make that grass grow, uh, and, and I would chuck a catheter in, I'd like to give it a big round of applause. And I'd also like to thank the water company for, uh, arranging to have water available there, a big round of applause for the water company for doing that. And, and lastly, um, I want to, you know, tell people that Monday night right here is the fire district being able to be nice, have a good turnout there, uh, and, and, and I also want to thank the board of selectmen for doing a good job this past year.
I just came in this early, I wanted to indulge you for about another one to two minutes, um, on the water down there, um, by the way, I, I happen to be a golfer, that's not always bad, and I'm sitting around up there talking about the issues that we had after we had the seating done down at Salmon Run, and we were trying to figure out how to get water, and I was discussing this with a gentleman from Franklin who works in the water department, and talking about buying pumps and pumping water out of the river, and Scott Davis, who's one of the commissioners for the water district, was sitting there listening to me while, this was up at the Denver Golf Course, he came over and said, "Hey, that's easy, we can reconnect the water," and as it turned out, um, they came in, they had the backhoe, the whole thing, they spent several days in there, they connected it all, they ran some lines down the road and all this, and they did it gratis, I can't thank them enough because without that, that water, that would have died, so, thank you, Scott.
I'm not waiting?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, wait, 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 annual Easter egg hunt, Riverfront Park Pavilion, April 2nd at 10:00 AM, date is April 3rd, 2016, yay!
All those in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Continue as adjourned at 10:48.
Anybody that was elected, please come down and get the scorecard.